Before we open the regular council, I would just entertain a motion to close the executive session to return into open session.
So moved, Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Councilor Gould, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Hello and welcome to regular meeting of the PBD City Council to be held on Thursday evening, February 27th, 7:30 here at the Wiggins Auditorium. This meeting is being televised live on Cable 9 and is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our city stenographer. If now, if you'd stand for a moment of silence. Now the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You heard the motion by Councilor Gould, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. If there's no objection, I'd like to take tonight's meeting out of order and ask the mayor to come forward and go through the various appointments. Seeing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening again, council. Thank you for letting me bring forward a couple of appointments to the council tonight. The first one is for the emergency management position, obviously a critical position considering the way of the world. For years past, we had the fire chief, Steve Pasden. Prior to that, we had our veterans agent. I believe the appropriate place to have the emergency management position is in the fire department, certainly with assistance from the police department, health department, and others. Chief Daley has been the chief now for a few months. Wanted to give him the opportunity before I brought this to you to get his legs under him as the fire chief, and he's been doing a terrific job moving that department forward. And he's ready, willing, and eager to tackle the emergency management position. He's already been doing some of that work already in the meantime over the last few months, and I just wanted to bring him forward to be officially named the Emergency Management Director for the city of PBD, and I think he'll do a terrific job, just as he is doing now in the fire department. Chief Daley, of course, is here and available to answer any questions.
Can I entertain a motion to receive item 7D?
Motion to receive.
Thank you.
If there's no comments from the council, I'll move ahead with a motion. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve Chief Joseph Daley, Three Hood Terrace, Danvus Mass, to the position of Director of Emergency Management with a term to expire December 31st, 2020. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any comments from councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Terrific, and now I wanted to ask for approval for three city solicitors, and I think I need to give a little bit of background about what's brought us here today. As you are aware, we have a new city solicitor. Mike Smazinski stepped aside, and Don Khan, who was the assistant, had stepped into that role, and he's doing a terrific job. Mike Smazinski, and I'm grateful for this, has stayed on over the last few months, helping with a number of issues. A lot of the work he's been doing has been involved on the school side with negotiations, grievances. He's been working on some puberty police gun cases, as well as some of the bigger cases that we've been dealing with, Verizon certainly, and some medical marijuana and other cases. He brings a great expertise into a number of different areas, and I'm grateful that he's been taking on that assistant role. At the time, we did reduce his salary when he stepped back, and now I think he's making right around where Adam Buckley, our assistant city solicitor, is making. I think it's around 50, $55,000, whatever that position is making. Mike Smazinski is going to be helping for the next few months. Again, I'm very grateful for that, to provide some help on some remaining items, and in the meantime, to help with the transition to someone that I'm bringing forward for an appointment today, Brian Barrett, to become an assistant city solicitor with the city of PBD. I think all of you know Brian very well. He's been active and involved in the city in a whole number of ways. He was previously worked as a city solicitor for the city of PBD. For the last few years, he's been helping as a member of the Board of Assessors here in the city of PBD, and has a distinguished career as a local attorney, handling cases of employment, real estate, zoning, different types of civil litigation. Has a wide range of experience that I think will fit in very nicely in the work that we do in the department. So I wanted to ask for approval of Brian Barrett as the newest city solicitor, new assistant city solicitor. I wanted to ask for approval of Mike Smazinski as an assistant city solicitor. Brian Barrett's appointment would be for two years to coincide with my term. I can tell you that Mike Smazinski will be wrapping up, and I anticipate by the summertime that he would be stepping down out of that role. I think it's very helpful to have him kind of work with Brian over these next few months to make sure Brian's caught up to date on everything. I thought it would be unfair to have Brian step into that role and not have some assistance from Mike on some of the cases he's been working on. And also to move forward with Adam Buckley, again, as assistant city solicitor. Adam has been assistant city solicitor now for eight years. He's handled a lot of the board cases. Adam also does a lot of work regarding Public Information Act requests, which there are significant amount that come in to all cities and towns, and he's become our public information officer. So I think we have a really good team. I think Don Khan is doing an excellent job as our city solicitor. I think the group over the years has saved us a tremendous amount of money because they have a wide range of expertise, and I think Brian will be a terrific asset to the department and will provide a great deal of expertise in his legal background in a wide variety of ways. So certainly available to answer any questions. I did want to commit that there is no funding that I'm going to be requesting. The changes, the adjustments that we've made to the legal department will all be handled internally through the current legal department budget. There will not be any need for an additional request until the new budget comes, and I'll be presenting that to you in May or June. At that time, I anticipate that Brian Barrett and Adam Buckley will be taking on greater responsibilities, and I would seek to have their pay at that time probably bumped up a bit, but that'll be presented to you when I come forward for the new budget. Brian is coming in now at 40,000, and I think financially, this will have no impact on us. Available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Manning Martin.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman threw you to the mayor. Thank you for that, Mayor. It's very clear what you're putting forward. I just wanted to reiterate and confirm that after a few months when Councilor Smazinski steps down, we will have one city solicitor and two assistant city solicitors. So we won't have four, we'll still have the three positions that we've always had, given a few months overlap with Attorney Smazinski moving on in a few months. Is that correct?
That's my plan right now. I don't anticipate that changing, but I would, as of now, that's my plan.
Okay.
If there was something additional I would bring, I would bring it ahead, have that discussion with the city council before I move forward with anything. I think Brian is really going to fit what we need.
Okay, thank you. Because as you presented tonight, it's not, it is within the budgeted legal amount this year, but should it go beyond a few months as you're presenting with Attorney Smazinski, it would go outside of that budget. So I, to June, I will, you know, I will approve. I'm behind you 100 percent, I get it, but I just want to make sure that we have just the three positions as we close the year out within our legal budget that has so been approved by the council.
I can commit to that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mayor, I support the appointments. I just had one question in regard to Attorney Barrett. He's currently the chairman of the Board of Assessors, which is in the budget at 11,000 or so. Will he remain chairman of the Board of Assessors? Can you take two city salaries at the same time? Just a question.
Yeah, good point, Councilor Turco. I should have addressed this in my comments. No, Brian will be stepping down from that position. He'll be taking this role as the assistant city solicitor. Probably at the next meeting or sometime in March, I'll be bringing forward a candidate to take that position in the assessors office.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilors with any other questions? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the appointment of Adam Buckley, Esquire 12 Castle Circle, PBD Mass, to the position of assistant city solicitor with a term to expire December 31st, 2021. Brian P. Barrett, Esquire 53 Emerson Ave, PBD Mass, 01960, assistant city solicitor with a term to expire December 31st, 2021. And Michael Smazinski, Esquire 100 Corporate Place, Suite 104, PBD Mass, 01960, to the position of assistant city solicitor with a term to expire December 31st, 2021. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Roll call vote.
Counselor.
On the motion, Councilman Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just with, when it comes to the appointment of Attorney Barrett, he's currently representing the estate of my grandfather, for which I'm an heir, so he's representing me right now. So I'm going to recuse myself out of an abundance of caution to ensure that there's no appearance of conflict. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Melville. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, now we will return to the agenda as presented. We will now go to item 4A, entertainment license, Brothers Main Street LLC. Is the petitioner in the audience?
I need to read the notice.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Please read the notice.
Thank you. Notice hereby given that the city council of the city PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 27th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from the Brothers Main Street LLC, DBA Brothers Restaurant and Deli, 11 Main Street, PBD Mass, for an entertainment license seeking non-live entertainment, specifically television and digital internet music and live entertainment, specifically live music and DJ, at said 11 Main Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council, Councilor Thomas J. Rozignol, City Council President.
Is the petitioner in the audience? Please come forward, state your name and what you plan to do. Right to the podium.
My name is Theodore Kudianos. My name is Theodore Kudianos, and my address is 10 Sherri Lee Lane, PBD.
And then what you intend to do at your facility?
We like to have live entertainment the days that we have on the application. It's most like a Greek night. And if we need to have a DJ sometime for another event, I would like to have that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? In opposition, seeing none, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E and refer to this hearing. So moved.
Heard the motion by Councilman McGinn, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken with the applicant, Mr. Kudianos, regarding this request. Actually, this had been delegated somewhat to his son, George, and one of the employees, Joanna Arvenios, who would be involved with running the Greek nights. Is that correct, Ted? So we talked about it and talked about it with Ted, and it's very clear what they desire to do, offering a Greek night periodically, which sounds great. The application was a little vague with respect to the number of amplifiers, so that was clarified that it's going to be one or two amplifiers, and the hours on the application needed to be adjusted a little bit to align with the ending of live entertainment with last call, as is the case with most entertainment licenses. We're also going to extend the hours earlier for the non-live entertainment so that there's no issue with having the TV on and so forth when they open very early in the morning at 6:00 AM. So I'm fully supportive of the application. At this point, I defer to other councilors if they have any additional comments.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, excuse me. I'm also in agreement with Councilman McGinn that Brothers Deli is the staple of downtown, and whatever we can do to help them be successful, I am in favor of. Thank you.
Councilor Mazzullis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am in favor of this application. Growing up in PBD, and it's one of the things I miss in PBD, being of Greek descent myself, there were always Greek dances somewhere, you know, either up on Route 1, the old Road House, Miss the Scorces Cafe on Walnut Street, the Brothers Cucina. I mean, they always got a, they had a big night, a big attraction, it brought business, and especially we're trying to promote the downtown. I think this is a great opportunity to get people to come downtown, because I'll tell you this, once he announces that this, he's got probably one or two nights, Greek night, he's going to get a good crowd down here, and it's going to bring a lot of people down. It's going to promote the city, and it's good wholesome fun. It's great dancing. People go there. It's the tradition of a certain ethnic group, and they've got absolute fantastic food to boot, too. So I'm in support, and good luck, and I can't wait for you to open so I can go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Sharris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got to tell you, when Cucina, a lot of the folks that work with me are Greek, and they were very upset when the Cucina stopped because they would go there on a regular basis. So I know they're going to be excited, and I'm glad to bring them downtown PBD, and during these nights, we're all Greek. So I'm looking forward to it also, and again, it's just, this is another step in the right direction for our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharris. Councilman Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ted, I'm a regular, you see me all the time. We talk all about all the different things you're doing to increase your business, and you know, I'm all in favor of this. I think you're doing a great job down there, and I think it's a great community gathering point, especially in the mornings or when something's going on. A lot of people are now saying, "Meet me at Brothers." I think that's great for you, and I think to include that into the evenings, what you're doing now is only going to be a betterment for all of us. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
I just had one question regarding the hours of operation. It looked like the live entertainment portion was from 8:00 to 1:00 AM on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Sunday, we're up till 11:30, I think.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the only question I had, was the Sunday hours. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close public hearing.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from Brothers Main Street LLC, doing business as Brothers Restaurant and Deli, 11 Main Street, PBD Mass, for an entertainment license seeking non-live entertainment, specifically television and digital internet music and live entertainment, specifically live music and DJ, at said 11 Main Street, PBD Mass. Hours of non-live entertainment, 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in a Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office. Hours of live entertainment, 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM, Sunday, I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday, 8:00 PM to 11:30 PM, Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Seeing no questions, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move to item 4B. Councilor Mazzullis.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a late communication, I'd like to receive, motion to receive. It's from Ankleys Von Salida San Beliotis Office.
Heard the motion by Councilor Mazzullis, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzullis.
It's a request for continuance of special permit application for this issue, for disco property, and they're requesting a date of continuance till March 12th. And the purpose is to, to, he requires additional time to review and evaluate the recently submitted memorandum concerning the above reference, which he needs, he's looking for a little time to answer some questions the community development had asked. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Mazzullis, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Mazzullis. We'll now move to item 5, reports of committee, finance committee, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met early this evening, February 27th, at 6:00 PM. Present for the committee were Councilors Gould, O'Neal, Manning Martin, and Turco, also present were Councilors Welton, Melville, and Rozignol. We had several items on the agenda. The first item was a transfer of funds to Brown School Randy Playground. Speaking on behalf of the transfer was His Honor, the mayor. He specifically made reference to two members of the community that have actively brought this playground to the place where it is today in terms of fundraising and advocating for community involvement, Haley Garino and Erin Thorpe. Also praised the work done by past Ward counselor and current at-large counselor Turco and current Ward One Counselor Welton for their efforts in this. The, Ms. Garino and Thorpe spoke briefly and indicated that they anticipate a March groundbreaking and that the playground would be completed by May. There was a motion by Councilor Turco, and the motion was as follows. Move to approve the transfer from account 270-0000-33021, Community Preservation Act Open Space, the amount of $120,002. Account number 270-01811-58562-2020-385, Community Preservation Act, Brown School Randy Playground. That motion passed 5-0, and I bring that motion now to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item on the agenda was the transfer of funds from various departments' salaries to water and sewer enterprise salaries and skating rink salaries. Speaking on behalf of that was the Director of Finance, Mr. Gingras. There was a bit of debate on the topic with respect to the fund that would be used to derive the transfer from, was ultimately decided to go with the recommendation of the Director of Finance. There were three motions made on this by Councilor Gould. The first was as follows. Move to approve the transfer of budget reserve account 1000132057410 in an amount of $144,207 to various department salaries, as detailed in the attached list AF asked me, in an amount of $144,207. That motion passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote. I bring that now to the full council, Mr. President. So moved.
You heard the call, you heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Gould's second motion was to approve transfer for unreserved fund balance free cash, account number 100-0000-35910, in an amount of $51,047, to water and sewer enterprise salaries to the account 460-4400-5110, in an amount of $9,172, and account number 460-4420-5110, in an amount of $41,875. That motion passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote, and I bring that now to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Seeing no questions on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Gould's third motion was to approve the transfer from retained earnings skating rink, account number 430-33101, in an amount of $1,441, to skating rink salaries, account number 430-6990-5110, in an amount of $1,441. That motion passed unanimously 5-0, and I now bring that to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The third item on the agenda was a transfer request for various departments' salaries. These were ordinance employees. To, the transfers were to salaries, water and sewer enterprise salaries, skating rink salaries, and golf course salaries. The mayor, His Honor, the mayor spoke on this and addressed some questions of the committee. There were four motions made on this by Councilor Gould. The first motion was See attached lists detailing these ordinance salaries in an amount of $113,144. That motion passed unanimously 5-0, and I bring that motion now to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Gould's second motion was to approve the transfer from unreserved fund balance free cash, account number 100-0000-35901, in an amount of $7,566, to Water and Sewer Enterprise salaries, account number 460-4420-5110, in an amount of $7,566. That motion passed unanimously 5-0, and I now bring that motion to the full council.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Gould's, Gould's third motion on this gender item was to approve the transfer retained earnings skating rink, account number 430-33101, in an amount of $3,046, to skating rink salaries, account number 430-6990-5110, in an amount of $3,046. That motion passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote. I now bring that motion to the full council, Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Gould's fourth motion was to approve the transfer retained earnings golf course, account number 440-33101, in an amount of $6,643, to golf course salaries, account number 440-6995-5110, in an amount of $4,118, and account number 440-6998-5110, in an amount of $2,525. That motion passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote, and I now bring that motion to the full council, Mr. President. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Seeing no questions on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda was a item D, which was a request to transfer funds to bunker gear in an amount of $100,000. We were addressed by His Honor, the Mayor, requesting this transfer, and also by Fire Chief Daley, who stressed the importance of getting this gear near term for the safety of the department. There was a number of comments on that. They were very supportive, and Counselor Gould made the following motion, which was to approve the transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation, account number 270-00000-33009, in an amount of $100,000, to bunker gear, count number 300-094121-58333-2020, in an amount of $100,000. That motion passed unanimously, and I now bring that to the full council, Mr. President. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda was item E, transfer of fund request for equipment sidewalk plows, in an amount of $104,000. We were addressed by His Honor, the Mayor, on this request, as well as DPS Director, Mr. Labassier, who explained the benefits of moving forward with this, the acquisition of this equipment, which we've been able to get at a fairly desirable price. There was a motion by Counselor Gould as follows. Move to approve transfer from unreserved fund balance 100-00000-35901, in an amount of $104,000, to equipment sidewalk plows, count number 300-0000000-58121-2020-0000-4210, in an amount of $104,000. That motion passed unanimously, and I now bring that to the full council, Mr. President. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last item on the agenda was a request to transfer funds to landfill soil operation expense in an amount of $530,000. We were addressed on this topic by His Honor, the Mayor, as well as DPS Director Labassier, who explained that the, these monies would be utilized in three areas. $148,000 for engineering services, $72,000 for new scale, and $310,000 for landfill operations that would be operated by a third party. The purpose of this was to enable us to, us, the city, to utilize landfill under some existing permitting that would potentially generate some incremental funding for the city by bringing in approximately 75,000 tons of soil at $38 a ton. So potentially generating in excess of $2.8 million in revenue for the city, netting out the expenses, would be beneficial to the city to advance this proposal. There was a number of comments by Counselors, all supportive, and ultimately, a motion was made by Counselor Gould as follows. Move to approve a transfer unreserved fund balance, account number 100-0000-35901, in an amount of $530,000, to landfill soil operations expense, account number 100-04310-58482-2020, in an amount of $530,000. That motion passed unanimously, and I now bring that to the full council. So moved, Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Seeing no questions on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Mr. President, in a, and in an, I should say, in a related matter to the, to the last item on the agenda, Counselor Turco brought up a potential issue with our ordinances that I believe he intends to address in motions, orders, and resolutions. So I just wanted to comment that we've, we did get inputs in committee from the Director of DPS on that, which hopefully will be satisfactory to the rest of the council, rather than referring this back to another subcommittee, as we might normally do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. There was a second meeting prior to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. That was a meeting of the whole and executive session. In attendance was the entire council, as well as Attorney Don Kahn. Agenda items were as follows. Litigation regarding AAA, litigation regarding Verizon Wireless, as well as a third agenda item was added, and that is in conjunction with releasing executive session minutes. The only motion that was made in executive session was to have Attorney Kahn go back and look at what minutes we have available to be able to be released, as far as executive session minutes goes. So that is a report of the executive session. We'll now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report.
Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you, Counselor President. Nothing to report.
Counselor Mazzullis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item A, B, and D, motion to receive and, and refer to our meeting that's coming up on that issue. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion by Counselor Mazzullis to receive items A, B, and D. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Mazzullis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, motion to receive a communication from Community Development in reference to the same issue in the Cut Street. Motion to receive and, and refer the, this communication to that meeting also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion by Counselor Mazzullis. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gould.
No motions, Mr. President. Nothing tonight.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8C, communication from Finance Director Mike Gingras, and to thank him for his quick action in getting back to us on how the newly adopted Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund would be rolled out. He indicates that it will be issued in the next real estate billing, and at that time, residents will be able to voluntarily make a donation to veterans in that manner through the billing cycle. And to remind everyone what that act is, it is an act relative to housing, operations, military service, and enrichment by establishing that Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund. So I wanted to thank him for doing that, and just to let the folks know at home in their next real estate bill, they will see some, an area where they may voluntarily donate to this newly created fund. So, so moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And also, under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8F, communication from the PBD Veterans Council regarding the invitation to attend the Memorial Day Parade. I just noticed, in case it went out to any other public communications or to the newspaper, there was a typo. It says it starts at 10:00 a.m., when it actually starts at 11:00 a.m. And at the conclusion of the parade, there will be a ceremony in front of the monuments. Failed to mention the Women's Monument. I want to make sure we don't forget the Women's Monument. And that's it. Everyone knows I love a parade. Just want to make sure everybody knows it's at 11 o'clock.
You heard the motion by Counselor Manning Martin. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That is it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Cheko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, Counselor Mazzullis, did you, there's an additional late communication from Attorney Kahn. Did you already receive that regarding your, your special permit? Move to receive a late communication from Attorney Kahn and refer to the Endicott Street project.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Counselor McGinn previously mentioned, and we discussed in finance, I would like to amend section 1367 of the PBD zoning ord, excuse me, Code of Ordinances. After the word prohibited, rather words prohibited refuse period, I'd like to add, unless otherwise approved by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, to the ordinance. And as Counselor McGinn mentioned, we typically refer that to legal affairs, but in this, in this case, we had already discussed this and got all the answers that we would typically ask for in finance. So with that, I'd like to move to adopt and advertise.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. On the motion, Counselor Melville, are you okay with that? I'll take that as an affirmative. On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this one, this is an old subject that keeps coming back here, and this is another proposed amendment to the PBD zoning ordinance, PBD Code of Ordinances. Under Article 2, Planning Board, Section 1013, four items are listed, A, B, and C. I'd like to add in section D, all meetings of the Planning Board shall be videotaped and made available for public viewing on PBD TV or its successor entity. Now that, that motion, I will refer to the Legal Affairs Committee for discussion. Thank you.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you. And last thing, Mr. President, I just wanted to let you all know, PBD Decker left this afternoon for their state championships in the city of Boston. I believe we had an abundance of kids that qualified for the state championships this year, upwards of 30 or 40 kids from PBD High.